This conference will now be recorded.
Time is 6:00 P.M. The regular meeting of the Denton City Council is now in session. Our information this evening will be given by Trina and Pastor Ladya. All right, that was church.
We want to stay up, but we ask why you want. I thought, Father, we come before they were down here in the middle. It's just saying thank you for another day that you have us to see. We thank you for the blessing that you have bestowed upon all of us. We just ask that on tonight that you invest this council in those who work for the city government, let's say, also, Father, we just thank you for the men and women who would give their time and talents to make Dennis a better place than we wish to live. Would you go with and stand by the people in your care in Jesus' name?
And I do have Assistant Police Chief Joe Plow, who will be this area, in our pledge.
Please, you'll be in my pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with which we pray and trust, and for all. On one hand, we take this flag, have the letter of Jesus to be, and as this one say, under God, one and in the visible.
In the meantime, attention, over the last couple of years, in our historic history and in our simple history, we have had a lot of restoration, reclamation, and renovation going on, and we are so thankful for that. We have thirty-seven, actually, that we recognize in the year 2020, and we have two for this year begins that I would like to bring in Johnny and Candy Allen, and Judy and Charles Hopper, if you have the copy of my hat presentation. Let's see who's the first on the draw. Johnny and Candy, if you've driven down Candy Street lately, you will see an amazing transformation that has taken place at Grinner. It is absolutely beautiful, and we are so grateful for your contributions and your investment in our community. And this brings to Johnny and Candy Allen at 331 West Candy for embracing Denton's vision to restore our magnificent historic buildings in the downtown district. Your commitment and investment in the restoration of this building has made a significant difference, and we applaud you for the love of our city and its historic past. And you can't see this, but you can see the before and after, and it is absolutely amazing. So I want to thank you so much. Thank you. Wait just a second. We want to get through. Again, we also have one to present to Judy's Flower Shop at 430 West Worth for embracing Denton's vision to restore our magnificent historic buildings in the downtown district. Your commitment and investment in the restoration of this building has made a significant difference, and we applaud you for the love of our city and its historic past. Judy, how many years have you been in business? For forty years in the same location, and if you haven't recognized our building, the transformation is amazing, and we are so grateful for your commitment to our community. So. For those of you who don't know, and if you don't know, you've probably been living under a law somewhere. Next year is our sesquicentennial. Our city will be 150 years old, and if you've been around while we've been digging up Houston and Main Street, you've probably found some info search that was about that. So we have a proclamation tonight, meaning that 2022 will be our sesquicentennial year, and we will be celebrating the entire year. Whereas the City of Denton celebrates sesquicentennial in the year 2022, and it is important to recognize this significant milestone with a year-long celebration and to applaud our rich history. And whereas the City of Denton was officially founded in 1872 as the key terminus of the Missouri Kansas and Texas, it named for the byproduct of railroad, George Denton. The community flourished as an important county in the western part of Texas, and where the first great public school in Texas was established in Denton on February the 6th, 1873. Several other firsts in current Denton's history include the first ice cream shop in the state of Texas, the first interurban rail line, and one of the first public parks in Texas. And whereas Dwight David Eisenhower, the 34th President of the United States, was born in an humble home along the railroad tracks in Denton on October 14th, 1890. And whereas other number-two-worthy individuals from Denton's early days include Thomas B. Munson, a biblical theorist whose studies were instrumental in saving the European trade and wine industry in the 19th century, and Shelton Zollberger, hero of the Hudson, who successfully landed U.S. Airways Flight 1549 in the Hudson River following a midair emergency. And whereas Denton has always made anniversaries a community tradition, the 75th anniversary in 1947, Fountain Denton is host to the Diamond Jubilee, with one of the largest turnouts for a celebration ever witnessed in Lexington County. Parades, dances, and early-day reunions rounded out with students. The centennial in 1972, Fountain Denton at the height of progress with industry expansions, a renovation, major difference, and schools and municipal facilities like IHOP in the state of Texas. And whereas the City of Denton will proudly mark its 150th anniversary with a series of celebrations throughout sesquicentennial year, beginning with the celebratory sound of fireworks in January 2022, and continuing throughout the year with monthly thematic programs and activities for the entire community, including Denton's birthday celebration the weekend of September 23rd, featuring the Doctor's Ball at the Baby Depot and continuing monthly throughout 2022. And whereas in recognition of Denton's 150 years of rich history, we look forward to telling the Denton story, cultivating community pride, and leaving a lasting legacy. Now, therefore, I, Jenny Goff, Mayor of Denton, Texas, do hereby proclaim 2022 as Denton's sesquicentennial year and urge the residents of our community and everyone who ties to Denton to celebrate Denton 150 throughout 2022. Sign, Jenny Goff, Mayor of the City of Denton. Who wants this?
Put on a dress.
Parents, you get it. Chris, I'm pretty sure that it's the longest proclamation since Denton. All right. At this point in our meeting, I'm going to set aside for anyone, any citizen who wishes to speak or we have any action listed on the agenda. Before reaching this point, you must fill out a request to speak card, and we have only three. All right. Recognize you, will you please come forward and send your name and address for the record. Jonathan Ermar.
Jonathan Ermar, Denton, Texas, 110 South Houston. I'm talking about the overlay district that we're here to rebuild today, and I just had a few concerns, and it was pretty much anything, I don't have a study on it, that every 10,000 you increase the price of a home, it lists how many families get outpriced of a home, turn on the garage, you know, you lose that, that automatically, I had about 20,000 per home. I don't do a lot of duplexes, I don't even like myself, so I'll just make a note, I don't have too much to say on that. But my concern is how fast this bill was being pushed, or this code was being revealed. You know, we just had a planning zoning coming here, you know, without time, we don't get ours requests done that fast. You know, my concern, I spoke to the writer of the House Bill 23, 2439, about the material requirements, you know, that they put a restriction on that directly and indirectly, couldn't control that, and that we're doing that when we're doing these code zoning mandates is where then we get into plan development, things like that to get these, but then we're requiring those items, they specifically put that indirectly in there, so they said that cities could not do that, require them as a side or as a trade-off, and that's how they worded that. So those were just a few of my concerns is we reveal this, that we do get back in there, and where we can do something without a garage or the lock sign, it's a carry, it's on that. Any questions? Thank you.
Dallas Hayden. State your name and address.
Dallas Hayden, Oklahoma, Missouri. Thank you very much for hearing me. I share a lot of Detroit's concerns, but I'd also like to have you go back to 1898. Eisenhower is a spark, because actually surrounded by a mixture of same family, these commercial uses. I don't think that duplexes disturb that, where creativity is way outside of, you know, Denton tradition. I mean, it allows creative housing solutions and helps resolve kind of tax and housing prices, and it's not the only solution, it's up in the world. I believe it's helping. I think you're right. I also like the reward of C.A.S.P.D. and the American required changes. It's not discussing, I think, quite a lot of work for that, the single-family history changes, what will the middle of the area develop? I've heard no one, but it could be a huge issue for small ones, and the infill overlay really provides a lot of flexibility to, like, new properties, or just kind of lot of all properties. It's really been, I'm assuming, very exciting, I can think of it personally, but. And then, you know, I think today, it's only about 12 duplexes that start in the city for a year. I think, I think there was a typo maybe in the agenda, and I think there were about 200 housing starts for a year, that started years and years, and so it's about 110, so. So I don't think that duplexes is an issue, I think they are part of that fabric of Denton history. I really appreciate your hearing. It's, we're just supposed to.
Alan Rossner. State your name and address for the record.
It's Alan Rossner, 303 Tracy. So I'm also here to talk about the residential. Like Mr. Ermar, undue haste might be seen as skid marks, probably got them in Z here and now loading on the field. There's a couple other things I need to bring up, you can have this quicker time, but obviously I understand what you're trying to do. The council currently has the authority to strike down triplexes, so that's really not a problem. I'm hearing the media reports that City Council has a problem with, I guess, growth of duplexes popping up. My wife and I, on 179 Rock, here, on single family, which we have on the, on our charts, we have six lots over in the northeast, and our plans were put in some of the 1,000 random units, about 13 minutes worth for each, and each side, so 26 hundred square feet. And to provide a lower, lower price point than to go in the single. So that was our plan until I started reading the new policies. For me as an investor, it allows more money for our buck. When you sit and think about it, that I can go and buy a single-family house today in Denton, $150,000, or I can go buy duplex, and build a brand-new duplex, cut it a little bit under that number, two of them, a little bit under that number, and provide a little bit of rent in their house. Plus, we have increased value to property, now that property goes from empty lot, which you might think is nice, to effective tax payment, because of something. And finally, the city has some lots that are probably triangle-shaped or just off-shaped, just a little too covered. If you remove this infill, those lots stay just like, it's a shame, because I think there was the right idea to try and fill in some of these gaps that are just kind of looking at, just looking at the neighborhood, it's refreshing to see. I think that the infill provides us to, to remove these duplexes as much as possible. Any questions? Answer. Good to hear your vote, please. Thanks for everybody for coming, appreciate it. Thanks.
Next item, the city agenda. There is a motion by Mayor General Kipander and a second by Councilman Charlie Hall in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same son. Motion carries. Item 5, public hearings. Item A, receiver report hold in discussion, conduct a public hearing, take action on ordinance issuing a conditional use permit for a public care major facility located at 917 South Arroyo, page number 2041, that is through C.E.D., is will be tabled and be heard by the council in a day in the future. Item 5B, receiver report hold in discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on ordinance changing zoning, 6.75 acres from agricultural zoning district to a light industrial zoning district, property located on Texan Drive, situated east of Reddell Light Road and west of Water Drive, page number 2021, dash 149Z, nine yards, and for being the first item on the table, a zoning zone, approximately 6.75 acres, property located on Texan Drive, Reddell Lake Drive to the west, and Water Drive to the east. Advocate is requesting the northern portion of total of 11.2 acres to be rezoned to light industrial from agriculture. As you can see, this around the area has been developed in industrial land, you have Reese Foods to the southwest, and Ching to the east, as well as the zoning is split between commercial and industrial. Just to recap, advocate is requesting a rezon, the northern portion of 11.2 acres from agriculture to light industrial zoning district. The zoning request does comply with the comprehensive plan, the planning and zoning commission, and staff agreement as well. She's the chair, and I believe she is here as well. Questions, please, sure. This is a public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of Denton Agenda Island? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion by council. A motion.
There, I move to approve ordinance, change controlling of such property.
There is a motion by Councilmember Corbett, and second by Councilmember Spiegel, all those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, same son. The motion carries. Item 5C, receiver report hold in discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on ordinance rezoning approximately 4.1 acres from the single-family 7.5 zoning district to a planned development of a lay district for a single-family residential development on South Leavon Avenue, page number 2021-150E.D. It will not be heard tonight because it was tabled by planning and zoning, and will be heard at a later date. Item 5B, receiver report hold in discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on ordinance permitting a planned development of zoning districts to a planned development of duplexes in 715 West Cedar Street, page number 21-156E.D. Also will not be heard tonight because it was tabled by planning and zoning, and will be heard at a later date. Item 5E, receiver report hold in discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on ordinance changing the zoning of the subject property from the agricultural zoning district to commercial zoning district located at the southwest intersection of West Crawford Street and U.S. 75, page number 21-15AC, is sure. This is also a rezon request, to rezon 2.52 acres from agricultural zoning district to commercial zoning district, that is second being an item to this item on the agenda of the agricultural zoning, the advocate is also seeking a huge permit for property. The overall property around it has been some commercial, you have the land development that was recently approved to the north for a ownership, and then to the south, surface. As I said, the advocate is requesting to rezon to commitment to acres from agricultural zoning district to the commercial zoning district. The proposed request is compliant with the comprehensive plan, the planning and zoning commission also for the zoning request that will be presented, staff. Questions, please, sure. This is a public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of Denton Agenda Island? Other, this is Josh Holling. State your name and address for the record, please.
Josh Holling, 3348 West St. Pretty much, you have that map on this agenda.
Well, this is on the rezoning, the C.E.D. is the next item, do you want to wait?
Um, I guess I'll talk.
Would you wait?
Um, so, on this, as far as the zoning, you know, definitely, we're just consistent with the northern and southern, compared to the commercial properties, it would make sense for this to be a commercial as well. So that's all I have to say about this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of Denton Agenda Island? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. Motion.
There, I move to approve ordinance, change of the subject property.
There is a motion by Mayor General Kipander, a second by Councilmember Spiegel, all those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, same son. Motion carries. Item 5F, receiver report hold in discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on ordinance issuing a conditional use permit for a collision center located at 3640 West Crawford Street, page number 2021, day 1592U.B., is sure. Thank you. Advocate is taking a CP for the collision center, the end user, the Joe Watson's collision center. Once again, here's the property, the intersection of West Crawford and U.S. 75, Z. Ken. The hours of operation proposed would be Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. All repair work will take place inside, and the parking lot to the back will be screened with this proposed screening. These are the proposed elevations. The advocate will step a formal site plan similar to include landscaping plans and soles, as well as planning concrete. The proposed elevations include masonry with metal accents. And the, I mean, zoning commission recommended approval from this commission, we should comment, staff comments as well. The advocate, here, you know, commissions, left. Questions, please, sure. This is a public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of Denton Agenda Island? All right, Mr. Holly, state your name and address for the record, please, I know it hasn't changed.
Josh Holling, Joshua Holling, 3348 West St. Corrada. Pretty much, on this, seems consistent with what's in the area, what's going in the area with dealerships just to the north, and being the auto to the south. It's not for me to say, as far as the screening, to me, it looks great. And then the, going west of Crawford, there's drainage, so I believe the hovering between the west part of the property is going to be more than sufficient between the neighboring properties for it to be successful.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of Denton Agenda Island? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion with council.
Can you go ahead? So my worry is, is that this is going down on seventy five. We're going to see all those garage doors which we kind of labored under, straight behind the structure. It definitely does have a lot of certain things. We're not even getting to the best of the ice. So that probably will lay out its start program for the next line.
Yeah, I think it was mentioned, masonry with metal accents. I look at it as more metal building, masonry accents. And I see, you know, on that board, or I think this is our chance to really create a beautiful highway portal. And just in the south, you have, you know, record service that's nice masonry. I believe the door of dealerships, they wanted those building there. It was all metal, but it wasn't invisible from the highway. It was requested that they had masonry done. So I just see. Along with, I don't know if I have my hand here. Big metal building that's worded. I just think that it could, it may look nicer. I have nothing against having a little bit of that there, just thinking it would be masonry.
Well, I throw a vote for the chairman today to look at the line that it is the chairman. Of course, the, it's oriented, so the office is facing the access road. And so when you, when you look at the, when you drive up and you look at the office, I think there, it looks fine. But if you drive along the ground, down the street, and this is what we're going to see along the highway. It's, it's just a, it's a long metal building that has movement dance, and that's what you're going to see. And I feel, I don't believe that that is the vision of what we're seeing in our highway over there. You know, and you'll be saying this again, and I'll say it once again. We got only one chance to get arrived. And I don't believe that, I don't believe this is, is what we want to see.
It's, it's not, is this, it's.
It's not, it's a way that we're going to work here.
So, so you, you want to, what? Loop Stainback fifty six twenty two Dire Street. Good evening, council. Thank you for considering the side. Just to count, sorry, I guess a few other comments that you had to add. There is a little bit of sliver front that's on the east side there that is remaining, it's trees, it's not part of this partial. And so those trees will still be there in front of where you would see those garage doors. A couple other comments, you mentioned the one in Sherman. This one is actually going to be all masonry, the one in Sherman is our panel. And so it's actually two different, two different products on the side of it. It looks, if I were going to look up, it'd become like, actually, I left a sample on my car, but it looks just stuck on that, on the outside. And the screening will be around here as well. I just, this the, what should have. So this screening will go around the town or where the Bay Area is. So that's what you would, you would see. That is six feet tall. We've done it before, eight feet tall to get even higher. So those are some of the things that I would say in response to any questions. Any more questions or is that answer some of what you're talking about?
Well, you said, you said it's all masonry, it's designed, it's all metal. You have a little bit of masonry on it, but it's like ninety percent of the building.
So, so it is, the front is stucked on stone, really insulated or with the architectural panel on those tops. And then the sides is a insulated metal panel that passes, it's masonry because it has stuck on the outside. If you look at it, it's just stucked on, it's like a stone gun. And so, that's what I was saying, I left a little sample on my car, but that's where I brought it into staff and showing them, it's a, because it's in the, it's a noble industry, so we have to modify it. So that was, that's, that's how, what's the segments that is the front there. I think if you look at colorations, it, it looks like it's, it's just a panel on the side of it, but there's some pictures that I submitted that are, that show that it's really just stucked up face on it. So that is, that is, this is natural pressure, building materials and all that. So, as well as the old insurance around it on the other side.
So do you, um, what it's in front of?
So, sorry, I'm looking for developer, but we have the, it's two separate lots that are under contract. Are you talking about the a little bit of sliver front?
I've talked about a lot that would be in front of it, that faces the access.
We do not know. So, but, so. So at the front now, there's nothing there. That's correct. So. A question I would, I would ask you all, if I may. If this was switched, I guess some, if it was rotated at all, would that make any sort of difference to y'all's entertainment status?
I think a rotation would help. I think, because your northern, your north side of your, I think it looks great. Over there, masonry, I think, issue, someone's had is just that, you know, big, long metal garage that, that is the majority of the building is going to be. So I think try to reduce that as much as possible. I would suggest a fence, table bits, just reduce that a little bit. It would help.
Sure. I agree, anything could be rotated so that we saw front of the highway, you see the main, front of the building, main office, something like that. It's.
Well, in, in, in the, in the packet, in the site plan, the legend that is there says that it's a metal building. Maybe, maybe what you got in the packet does not reflect what it actually would be, but that is the information that they, that we were given, that it's in a metal building.
I, I have a new grab for my car, it's parked right out here, and I don't want you to go away. Say it for you, but I can show you exactly. Is he, you can see the vehicles in? I'm in the back.
So that means it's, it's, it's masonry is required, masonry required.
That's correct. This, this side, it's, so. Yes, ma'am.
For me, I, I need to, I need to see, I need to see more information. The orientation is, is now, I think, something.
So it's, we were, it's, it's taken the items, the orientation, we got. Not this request, a yearly request.
It depends if there are any other changes. It was just orientation. I think it's just orientation to start over. You know, there are multiple significant changes to the ordinance that people made or may not have wanted to address at a public hearing the way it was advertised this time. You have no provided opportunity and intention to start it, but not necessarily. So that was a ready open meeting.
I think that is the only reason I'm recording.
If it's just, if it's orientation and exterior material. Sorry. If it's just orientation and exterior material.
If it's still the same, is this the same power as it was originally?
It's the same.
There, there's also some question, just to, with that material, power definition. So at least, we want to consider that is basically property. I don't know, architectural, so just a small subdivision section. It's the same to the city.
And America, also just to point out, Bill, what Julie was saying, keep in mind, we look back to the house of property which is zoned. What was advertised was about two and a half acres. So if the site is to be reoriented and flipped, the advocate would need to come back and also adjust how they want to rezone the property. Because that's what right now, this configuration, this current situation. So if we table it, they would also have to submit a separate zoning application to amend those boundaries. Is that very clear to you?
Yes, the, the property acreage or boundaries are going to be different that way out.
I also wanted to note too, the same material that's here was also utilized in my channel to see materials over there, and added to the highway overlay, that was accepted. But if, right, we've been looking at that.
We have a discussion from council. I hope, is there anyone else who wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the, well, actually, I'm being close in, if you came up, it's okay, right. Yes. All right. But I'll close it again if you have six minutes. Oh, okay. All right.
Very good.
Let the record replay that Councilmember Spiegel has returned to the dials, six forty three. Is there a motion?
So let the same is, way to deny. Re-look at the progression. So I will, there are many motions to deny the issue, which is going to lose precedent for your, so, 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 so.
There is a motion by Councilmember, Madam Kim Mander, and second by Councilmember Corbett, all of those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item five G, receiver report on the discussion conducted public hearing and take action on ordinance changing the zoning of a subject property from the office zoning district to water panel to zoning district located north of Arthur Luther King Street and west of Memorial Drive, case number twenty twenty one, day one six five C, Mr. Medina.
Thank you. Good evening.
Just, just a second, please. Let the record replay that Councilmember Corbett has to leave the dials at six forty four. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Here's a southern property on Langley Yellow. Maybe I'm sure all of you familiar with the old TMC hospital location. It's a southern property. It's currently zoned under office zoning districts with local retail to the north as well as the west. Traditionally see multifamily one zoning to the east and some single family to the south, so more info in the notes. Here's an elevation that was submitted by the advocate. While this is just a concept, this does provide you an idea of the type of product of this location. And here is the proposed concept for the rezoning. Now, this encompasses three separate phases over the entire site. Each phase approximately ten acres in size. And literally, we found the two zoning, the advocates requesting, opposing, roughly just under five hundred apartments. If approved tonight, the advocate will then move forward with the final request to abandon part of Memorial Drive. If this is approved, then any utility lines to that Memorial Drive right away will be relocated. Also pending approval, the advocate will be submitting a site plan at five, as well as similar to that. So as a recap, the advocate's proposing a rezon, the old TMC site to MM two or multifamily one two. Our comprehensive plan causes area to be a proper redevelopment zone. And planning and zoning commission are going to approve also ten percent. Your staff is also there.
Register, Mr. Medina. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance changing subject property for the office zoning shift to the more effective zoning shift. Sir.
There is a motion by Madam Kim Mander and the second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item five P, receiver report on the discussion conducted public hearing and take action on ordinance repealing possession twenty eight dot four A A residential infill overlay district, Mr. Medina.
Thank you. So the proposed ordinance in front of me today will, as you mentioned, repeal the residential infill overlay district in its entirety. So here's a polygon of the infill overlay factors. As you can see, it encompasses most of the older parts of Dennison, the eastern parts of town, all the way to the east city limits, Art of Texan Drive, ups to the west, Long Ray Drive, just west of the park and east, Ray Market is, east of U S seven. Some of the notes that I have here online in your staff report, the residential infill overlay in its existence today, as amended in twenty twenty, whilst there are variations of block size and dimensions up to thirty percent, or smaller than thirty five foot wide block, right? As well as minimum square foot area of, in six hundred and fifty square feet. The infill ordinance also allows for duplexes to be built anywhere within this outline, polygon, right? And just a little bit of history, the residential infill overlay district was created really to help spur a stagnated housing market and as well as the affordable housing growth. City kind of took a two-pronged approach, which was incentivize residential home, single family detached homeownership in these parts of town, also kind of demoing some structures that happened, subject to, I guess, white, for lack of a better term for it. So the assumption in the next hand was eliminate some of these blighted properties, allow for easier development, restrict your neighborhood's building, thus incentivize it with reduced parking standards, reduce lot size requirements. Thus incentivize it with reduced parking standards, reduce lot size requirements, even duplexes. Our system, our housing market significantly shifted. And we are now like with two separate building standards. One building standard infill, your base zone for rest. So repealing this ordinance will allow uniformity, great consistency across the entire city, requiring to base zoning district. Unless there's a P, it's one kind of a, it's a district. So first, the ready questions that you might have, your staff is.
Questions for Mr. Medina.
So I think you guys will work hard on this. Work hard on comparative, work hard on change. So appreciate you. And your staff.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Yes, sir. Will you state your name and address for the record?
Absolutely. My name is Phil Martin. My address is five, it's in, in Atlanta, Texas. My partner and I have been building homes here for some time, quite a few. Primarily exclusively in the infill district. Twelve months ago, when, not the infill, the area of the district. Twelve months ago, when this was thereabouts implemented. We were thinking, that's a good thing, because half the time, our goal, infill twenty thirty plus homes, same family, specifically for residents who live in this area. Or the, well, probably. Were being very successful. We had noticed that the, yes, Innison, the price of dirt began to go up. As the price of dirt goes up, while this at the beginning of last year, housing costs go up to a million. So everything goes up. We had done quite a bit of research based on the two thousand and ten census, the new twenty census came out. Looking at ninety percent of families dual income were making a fairly minimal amount based on this everything. You can run the math backwards and figure out what people can afford. The dirt got so much, we were building nice, long square foot of home, thirteen hundred square feet. We were all of a sudden pricing ourselves out, demographic, we were here to serve. So we began to go and, and design a much, much smaller home. Quite, well, we don't have time to, we want an area of fifty square feet, who, what family of kids can live and they're, you can't. So that part of the policy, we think it, maybe decades ago, that means it's been on now. So we designed a smaller home, about a thousand seventy square feet, with two car garage to make up for it. Every bedroom is oversized compared to everything else. And we actually, tremendous response to it. But what we found is that, when we did tests, we built some homes fifteen hundred, sixty hundred square feet in the infill. That were in the two hundreds, above two hundreds. And while we had focus groups on this, we did a lot of research on this about a year and a half ago. The resounding response was, best home we've ever seen, we have the money to buy, we would buy it, live in here. I'm not going to pay you the twenty thousand, twenty thousand dollars for a home, it looks like any month's your vacation, one's next door. No offense, but there are some pretty blighted areas in this infill. And so they gladly took their money and moved to places. We did that experiment twice, and there's the hard cat in the end. So as we began to try to figure out how to keep the price point to serve all the people that need to live here. Right, which is what our goal was in Dennison, was we liked this technique, we wanted to serve a particular area. The infill law came along. We build duplexes. That makes sense. Up until that point, we had, we sold thirty five, forty homes, we had never sold to an investor. And we were proud of that. Owner occupants only in this area, we're building houses. The day we advertised duplex, we had never sold another one to an owner occupant. Because the demographic, what a perfect thing, if they could afford two houses for the mortgage and then rent the other side out. The demographic at large, ninety percent of it can't afford to do that. Who can afford to do it? It's the only place in the larger metroplex where you can actually, as an investor, buy something and get a one percent move in. Let's go into it, but, so the investors looked at this and went, wow, we're in. Our comment was, well, the policy seems weird, because I can't sell a half a duplex. If I was to sell a half a duplex, I'd be right back into the price point of the demographic that's here. And we, the owner occupant, all dating all. That's the policy here, so thinking, okay, so we chatted up with a lot of budget builders, a lot of dirt. Really made some, only managed to make plans on this, instead of the thing that, my, that's my big story here tonight. How do we serve Dennison in this area? I don't want to build a much smaller house. It's good ones to live in that. I hope to ask the council to reconsider two things. One is the speed at which this is being implemented. Because there's a lot between me and my coworkers, my associates who also do this, there's a lot of time, money invested in dirt, ramping these things up. Stop the milk break. That hurts, that hurts real bad, because we need time to plan out it as well. Right? So I have asked the council to, to discuss it. I don't understand what you don't like about duplexes. The gentleman before said it's only one tenth of the housing starts. I figured it to be much, much, much less than that. Maybe one hundred, but the total house in the infill. It's not much, but something that's happened or occurred when it has to grant. I would love to know what that is, because we will, for my part and my individual, I will correct it. We'll meet with you, what would you like to see? Let's work our companies, that has been the financials of us building along with what the demographic can't afford. Right now, the demographic can't afford what we're doing, but what we're doing. And the world is coming north. My concern is, who's going to live here? If we can't build new houses that look nice, it's continue to be the people who are here, so what are we going to do for them? I don't want to build for them, frankly, because, you know, wholesalers, when you're jacking up the price of lot, thirty, forty thousand, I can't even own your house anymore. Especially if there's trees all over, I need to bring in dirt, or actually, it doesn't make sense to some of them. Don't school them, deal. Lots are so big, you can't be a group creator and split them up. One fifty, that's dating. So I would suggest if you're open to it, I would like to know what we're doing that caused this immediate shutdown of this. A general term, the building is. It's real general, there's nothing specific, there's no specificity to why you're doing this that I know of, and I would like to know what it is. Because literally, our whole business has been in this area. It's been successful, but we're about to focus on A D's in Dennison. Because we like Dennison. But I'm concerned for this area. That I just don't see, unless we collaborate more. I know that you guys have the power and all of it. Maybe I would suggest considering a process where if we want to do something beside the single family, here's a special name of a special process, that if we like what you're going to do, you can do it. If we don't like what you're going to do, you can't. Let us get creative to serve the populations here. Because if it doesn't continue to improve, everybody's going to go with the new stuff, which will not be here in this area. Which meaning is a shame. I mean, I personally have kept a number of the things we know real close to downtown, because I think it's a good place. I think it's a good place. But this is kind of a rock and hard place to build us at this point. And it's especially a rock and hard place, because I personally, I can't speak to everybody, I just don't know the rationale, what did we do? That's so objectionable. What can we do to get together over the next several months to tell us, work with this? You know, lots of creative, lots of creative ideas I want to do. But I would rather do something that I know, that I'm not selling to investors anymore. Because right now, that's the only people coming to me, that's the only people that can afford it. Which kind of piece of point of lighting that business here, right? So I would ask the consideration to lengthen this process a little bit, and if not, the last thing I would have asked, and I think this is really, really important. Document with great clarity, if it goes away tonight, what specifically are the rules for vesting? If I'm applying for a duplex address? That means I'm already, I'm in contract to buy it. Am I vested? Is it having a permit submitted? Is it having a permit approved? If we all here have invested tens, thousands, hundreds, lots and lots of cash in our businesses, and this coming away from tonight, if this, if this goes away, specifically, where do we stay it? Very specifically, put it right, so Bill knows what to do, he knows what to do. The progress we have, because we're in a pipeline. Nothing's done overnight. We order supplies ahead of time now. We stop planning, because our whole year is planning the decks, frankly. We plan on building thirty, forty structures here, Dennis alone. So specifically, what is vesting, what's vested and what's not in this process. We would love, like I said in the future, to collaborate, but can we? That makes sense for the people who live. And I keep it growing and getting more beautiful. It's going to be a lot better. Thank you for your time, gentlemen, ladies.
Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item?
I have one, please, sir. So, so.
Can you come to the fucking place and stay your night and rest with the rent?
Mike, Charlie, Howard, I didn't change either. Alan Ross, three, I think Tracy, and Bill Dentz. One thing this gentleman just brought up, which kind of clicked with me is price alone, has anybody kind of kept an eye on what our cost of buildings these days? We're going to put in duplexes in the section of West Comster. So two duplexes. All of a sudden, my price went from, it was one oh five square foot to two oh, two ten. I think it was the over those cost. So I put the brakes on. Two of the reasons that we put the brakes on this was, we came to Dennison ten years ago to rent properties, Dennison residents, and then we moved here to join our tenants in infill. My wife and I wanted to provide something that we saw a lot of going on out there, which was houses that were half wrecked, being rented for market. My wife and I took this property and rented it. This building that we were going to give in infill was going to probably transform that part of town, maybe into something that's affordable housing and beauty instead of just empty lots and rundown buildings. The point that, the point that he brought up was the cost. I'm an owner investor, differences that, we're up here, we're investing in the community. And we're not going to be in, we're not in California, or wherever, sending them just our money here. We're living here. And we're here to, to be part of it to you. And we want to try and get back and stuff, so our rents are a little bit below market. We provide a nice, clean home and affordable. And that's the key, that's what's missing here, is the affordability. Can you rent a four bedroom, two bath house in Dennison for under fifteen hundred dollars? You can't do it. You just can't do it, because it's just not there. That's all we're asking. And with the infill, if it goes away, it's going to be a problem. Will be a problem for us, because we do have a lot of money invested in certain areas. And we're about to break room, break the chain, but it's a problem, because this is just front. I really wish you guys would take the brakes.
Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Unfortunately, sir, this second item, the rest of the right.
Good, Siri, ten, two, three, seven, Mary Drive, Crystal Texas. I am a partner in, 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 of the city, came up here in twenty twenty and invested a lot of money in lots of, yes, when this ordinance came in, obviously, we bought a lot of lots and quite a few pipeline. I agree with everything this department said, I'm going to add to it. This thing goes away overnight. The millions that would be invested, we cannot afford to buy any more lots at this point, because of the law. There's no way I can afford to build a single family home at forty plus thousand dollar lots. So I think it is considered, if I make my application. That if our things are going to come to a halt in this area, because it makes no sense for me to invest more money to buy any more lots, right? It's a number just to work, unless we can, in some examples, these, these few duplexes. So I don't know if you've gone through that, how that can affect things. I'm concerned it slowed down the millions of revenue given to the city in tax, you know, we needed for infrastructure and everything else. I can think about back to twenty four, the city would build two months here. What has happened in these past few years? Even great, great product, we love this city, we'd like to continue to invest in this. But I'm just really worried about, how is this going to affect this? Immediately, whether the landlord is going to, tomorrow's, think about it, no. You know, these builders cannot afford it anymore, I'm going to drop my price by half. I think that's going to happen that quickly. So that's what I'm, what's going to happen. And then to Phil's point, that some of us who own all these lots, what's going to happen? Is it, is there a list, you're going to give us, this thing's going to go away soon or immediately? What is ramping? How much time do we have? All this ramping, retooling, buying new plants, all this stuff we've done, because the ordinance set up, the city putting, putting obstacles on it. Just what we put in, we are fine, we're losing it. Goes away, and you've got a ramp down time. How do I do this? What is, I mean, we're talking, you know, people's livelihoods here. We've invested our livelihood entirely, like saving. So how do I do this? How do I ramp down? Is there grace here? Is there grandfather of, of his own, of his permitted, submitted? We just need some true, very, very clear, precise, by accident, some, so we can understand. How do we do this? And maybe, that's it, which will be happened. We have to sit at the sidelines to see what happens. Or if we just release one board and get some of those deals. But the infill will be, it's dead as far as I'm concerned, this goes, at least current lot. I have any questions over that. And with that, thank you so much for that speaking. In case.
Anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item?
Just add something.
Yes, Mr. Hayden? Send your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, that's the, that's the, that's the one that, the one that, that's mentioned that who likes their, you know, non-uniform status for existing duplexes, or this, whether or not you have the power to lower the instructions for them. If someone's too like, yeah, that would be.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the hearing is closed. Discussion from council.
I think it was always to review it at some point. Come on, that'd be something else. They needed to, to spread it out. Work, success is a good thing that we're doing. That shows that you will, you know, that's status on that, that they'll be moving, they're moving, they're moving. Don't hit. The way you're hiding it, but not all the two places. We're just saying, there's gonna be a creative process to let us, our processes be. But we're not, we're not trying to stop, it's not gonna stop. This is what we're, we're just trying to now that this has been successful, so I, so I just forced, I got we had discussed this in our vision session several months ago. This is not something that I decided to do spur of the moment. Everything's, but when it's out, it's, it's the way all my rights is. It's not trying to blind people, it's just, that's the process. So I appreciate it.
Another, we have seen before. It's, it's not, it's not there. Um, I realized it, or noticed it. Well, it's gonna lead back to the issue that we, I, I will are you interested in buying? It's kind of the same concept. It's not the one that we, that we've built up this. But the fact is, it's just not about buying.
Yeah, there's discussions in the house. Is there a question?
Mayor, I'm sure we've been working through the sessions, we're getting a point for it. It's a joint call of the district.
You got a second?
Certainly.
There's a motion by, by Kim Hunter, the second by Councilwoman Beagle. All those in favor, please say aye. Both say aye. Much in cares. I'm the sixth day, receiver report on the discussion to take action on ordinance of many sections represented section, third and sixth, chapter four and four, the motion.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Councilman, City Manager, Erin Warner, Director of Leisure Services. And I'm here bringing an ordinance change for the council tonight, a preview. This is the same information that was presented to you at the last council meeting. It's a project update in case we needed to go back and make any changes. Official right to council. So with that being said, I'll, I'll give you a brief overview in the night so we can make sure everybody understands what we're presenting. With our historic preservation ordinance currently, we stand today with any paint color changes that come before the HP board, the historic preservation board will give a recommendation and then immediately that, that present, or that application will go before city council for final approval. What we're presenting tonight, for the, uh, many of our ordinance, to make it where the historic preservation is the deciding factor on approving paint colors at their level. If there was a denial at the HP level, that would immediately trigger an opportunity for an appeal and, and the applicant would be able to bring their case before city council at that time and present their case. With that being said, I want to give you a little update of where we've been over the past few months. This has been something that we've been working on entirely in the background. We've done a lot of research, we've talked to a lot of other communities with historic preservation boards to, to make sure that what we're presenting tonight is, is really the standard that we see across the state. So what we did at the very beginning is we pulled our, our list that we have been working on in the past. This list was considered an approved color list in Denison and it has been for many years. With that being said, we were directed to take that list, take all two hundred and fifty eight colors that was on that list and, and put it into a survey format. That survey was passed around to our downtown business owners, our Main Street Advisory Board, the Main Street Design Committee, and then a special committee that was formed to review paint colors. That special committee was, then, then took the data from that survey and, and reviewed it and then took that information provided us with recommendations that they wanted to see presenting tonight. For your permission, a few of those recommendations that came from that committee were that we reduced the number of colors that were in the palette. Again, like I said earlier, there were two hundred and fifty eight colors that were essentially automatic approvals. If you chose a color on that list in the previous format. As we stand today, we, with the committee's help and the survey's help, we have reduced the amount of colors that are on that list. But one major change has been made after doing a lot of research and talking with other communities. It was really hard to find another community that had an approved color list that was an automatic approval at HP board. There were a couple of communities that had lists that were there as recommendations to, to provide an, an asset for someone looking to paint their facade, recommended colors for a district, but they were not automatic approvals. So that is a major thing we're presenting tonight is that we in Denison will no longer have an approved list of colors that deemed, that are deemed automatically approved at HP level or a council level. Every applicant will have to present their case and for their, their specific facade, specific building. And I'll get to some of that in this next section. Continuing on with the recommendations for the ordinance changes. The, one of the big things that came from this was the word appropriate. So applicants must choose colors that are appropriate to the architectural style and complement the building and surrounding areas. And that will be something that they have to present in their case. The choice of color for buildings must align with the adjacent buildings in the overall setting for downtown Denison. And finally, when an applicant comes before the historic preservation board for approval, they must provide the following things. They must provide a rendering of the building with those colors on it. That includes facade, trim, doors, et cetera. Anything that's gonna be painted must be presented to them. A current photograph of the building showing what it's, what it looks like in this current setting. And then a painted sample that shows the color that they're proposing on a light material that they'll be painting. If it's brick, then they will need to provide painted bricks, stucco, metal, et cetera. It will even have a sample of whatever's gonna be painted. That way, whenever they're presenting their case, the, the board can see an exact color that, that would be on the building practically what we see on our different screenings whenever it's presented where one TV might show slightly different than another. All of these items are simply to allow our historic preservation board to have enough information in front of them where they can make a decision whether or not that, the presented color is worthy of being on a facade in council meetings. So moving forward, the Denison Historic Preservation Board would serve as the gatekeeper for our chair of historic assets. As well, or in addition to that, the Main Street staff will now be the staff liaisons for historic, historic preservation cases moving forward and would be the ones presenting it to the board. So that is another change. And in order to determine the appropriateness of a proposed project, the board will consider if, one, the proposed work complies with the applicable approval criteria. Two, if the integrity of an individual historic structure is preserved or restored. Three, new buildings or additions are designed to be compatible with the surrounding historic properties. And last but not least, for the overall character of the historic overlay district is presented, is protected. That is, that is the information that I have as far as the ordinance changes. I will say that we were able to bring in a professional from the industry to do witness representation training with the entire board and staff. And we did that last week. It was a really good opportunity to, to go over these in detail. And I believe that we're all on the same page with the board for how we want to protect and chair our, our chair of assets.
Questions for Mr. Hunter? Erin, you and Donna and King, amazing talk. Very difficult, a situation that you really can best, so, and you, all your gifts. Is there a motion?
There is a motion for the section. Six, okay, for the historic.
There is a motion by Mayor of Kim Hunter, the second by Councilwoman Beagle. All of the, aye. Both say aye. Much in cares. I'm the sixth day, receiver report on the discussion to take action on approving the Denison Arts Council's budget and use the hotel occupancy tax for the year twenty twenty two. Thank you, Mayor and Council. On October eighteenth of this year, city council approved a funding agreement for the occupancy tax funds. Now I can't speak. Between the city of Denison and the Denison Arts Council for推动the arts. As part of the agreement, the arts council is here to present their annual budget to the city council that details plans for the use of hot funds for twenty twenty two. The annual budget must be allocated to the city council, prime to arts council's use of any hot funds. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Jenna Zapata from the arts council, and she's going to go.
Hi, my name is Jenna Zapata, I'm the vice president of Denison Arts Council. Also, I'm the president of our steward, our secretary from Salem. But I'm just gonna go over some of the amazing things we get to do in comparison to the hot tax and estimate the goal to do some of the plans that they have to this upcoming year. So this is a little bit of a budget breakdown. We have included pictures of actual items that we have been able to fund and things like that. I'm gonna go through each of the kind of number items to explain a little bit more of what we've thought of sorts. So the first one is our art in the whole, city public art initiative. So we have partnered with the city to, to display artwork here in city hall. So every time we come in, we're welcome, they're coming to city hall. We have artists that are local to the area who are able to display their artwork. We're super happy to bring any creative aspect or non-creative aspects to city hall. And yeah, it's just been a really great thing. We received a ton of comments, a lot of people leaving. To be the business event, to do parts, and we have a total of five hundred dollars in that covered. Installation fees and sort of thing of our pieces and other things like that. Our next event, this is our seventh biggest event that we host for the year, is our Art Line Event that is on downtown. And I just kind of wanted to run over a couple of statistics from last year. We sold three hundred and one tickets. Our goal was three hundred, so we completely sold out the numbers. And thirty percent of those were from the DFW area and fourteen percent were out of state. And we also had an income of six thousand dollars from ticket sales, we'll talk about where that will be a little bit later. But we invite local Texas wineries to come out, we feature our local artists as well. And it is a great shopping event for patrons to come and sit downtown, so super, super cool.
It was a bad bet.
Thank you so much, I'm the chair of that, so thank you.
Very good.
Thank you so much. This is our largest event, Dia de Morcos, that we host, also in partnership with Grace College. In twenty twenty one this year, we celebrated our ten year anniversary. And I just want to note that like, if you look at bigger cities like Dallas and Houston, they just had their first ever Dia de Morcos. So for Denison, they have ten years of Dia de Morcos and kind of the front runner of that. We're super, super grateful. We also met with the leaders of the Dallas Dia de Morcos who asked us for advice on how you were in our event. So it's kind of a big, big marketing that we love to host. We have performers who came all the way from San Antonio and Houston to come. And next year, I know that we're looking to expand because I have the statistics for our one because we do ticket sales that really reflect our marketing towards an actual number. So we're looking to expand that for Dia de Morcos to have a ticket in some sort of aspect in that kind of way. Next, I think I took some of film club. We originally had it in the library and since then we have moved to Ivanhoe and works. And this year it has exploded in attendance, I would say over three hundred percent. We've had interactive movies. And next year, our goal is to either think about hosting a club or really, really, really toward our own tours, actually hosting the film festival. And what we would have, um, film, uh, and I'll post and create films that will be brought here to give more tours. Towards the year two, Denison. Our office space in ordinance, we can use our hot tax for our office funds. But I did, that's where all of our ticket sales and T-shirt sales come in, it's like, it's a good six thousand dollars just from all. All, sorry, sorry. Our one and only, I mean, like I said, we're looking to have more ticket sales for accurate numbers for events like Dia and other things like that. And those T-shirt sales and stuff go to the office space, which we're so glad to have a stand space in the KED though, and hopefully this day gather information about Denison Arts Council and our and this is our really big one, public and performing art. If you have seen around town, we've been partnering with the Main Street Design Committee to activate the alleys in partnership with D three to make them a lot. I would say beautified, that one's a little bit more. So performing in public art is kind of there because any sort of new event or any new application that PAC receives, we allocate those funds there so that we can cover things for the entire year. So in twenty twenty one, we had a piece of funds go to Arts Jazz Fest. Along with music offering, we supported the dumpsters, murals and other sculptures. We have a flight sculpture, you can see four thousand dollars with that, which we're super excited to be partnership to bring some creatively artwork out of the tragic dumpster of fire. We just approved our olive board sculpture, which I'm sure we'll be hearing about soon. The color condition installation, which as you can see was featured by Texas Lifestyle Magazine. Our dumpsters were featured by Frastula Paint, which was super cool. And then, like I said, we funded twenty dumpsters and then also we all go back and bring them back. And then this is advertising, advertising and marketing, but it also includes other things like insurance and not such, you know, art kind of beautiful things visually. But yeah, we're getting a new website, which we're super excited for visitors to come and see online. The first one are awesome photos that we also use this for. We have a local photographer on our social media, they keep active, so anyone who's looking online can find us and get all that good information along with promotional materials, whether that's advertising in print magazines, physical maps that we also help. Our pressure, we're super, super excited. We've got, yeah.
I think it's really small.
Thank you, we're so excited to bring all this in.
I'm just, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Yes, the word since the centennial.
I have literally been trying to pronounce it. I'm so excited. But yes, I, like I said, it's the tenth anniversary, so it'd be super cool to feature a lot of our inscriptions. Yeah, but, yeah.
My daughter's got an incredible problem. It's so much more complicated. It's one of our problems. When the color condition is installed, we have to take my kid every time because he knows it's there and it's the colors. So my daughter, changing the mindset of this, it's, it's amazing.
Yeah, we're super grateful for the partnership and that the city values art. Thank you guys so much.
Discussion room, yes. Motion?
Mayor, I approve this article, budget and use hotel occupancy.
Certainly. There is a motion by Mayor of Beagle and a second, Mayor of Kim Hunter, all of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both say aye. Motion cares. I'm the sixth day, receiver report on the discussion to take action on the purchase of Tyler New World computer and dispatch CAD, I'll try to explain this to you shortly, and record management system. R M S system is an essential component of public sector to replace by R M S.
And Tyler New World is one of the leading software for this type of the market today. This product would replace the I C S CAD and R M S system that we currently utilize. Again, the computer and the dispatch, the CAD, or who we refer to, is a system that's utilized by our dispatchers. Our call takers, nine one one operators, to prioritize and support the instant calls, identify those type of calls, the status and location of our officers. And respond in the field. Our record, record management system is the management of our records for our public sector throughout our records lifecycle. We have to see big records for long periods of time. The activities in this system include systematic and efficient control of the creation, maintenance and destruction of records along with the operational transaction. But that, just simple terms, this is the brain of our, our organization, the police department. Currently, our system doesn't provide the tools that are needed in the public sector to move forward with existing and future technologies. At this time, we're requesting to purchase a new system that will enhance the records department and speed of actors. This system would ensure call takers and dispatchers will have the reliable tool together to transmit information. It can streamline workload and efficient access to mission critical data, simplify reporting, trend analysis, and then deliver information through high level dashboards for policing by personnel. It will enhance decision making, improve organizational performance and response plan. And supervising command staff with high levels of overview, something I can push a button and see what's going on. The system allows that to be shared across application in between all roles and functions, which is not feasible currently. The computer and the dispatch CAD. It will enhance decision making, improve organizational performance and response plan. And supervising and command staff with high levels of overview, something I can push a button and see what's going on. Uh, the system allows that to be shared across application in between all roles and functions, which is not feasible current. The computer and the dispatch CAD, nine one one system enhances response times and can handle C L or multi- jurisdictional dispatching activities. We saw this just last week, uh, or so with our systems throughout the county like that. Um, this, uh, this ability to ensure public safety agencies are compliant with the state and federal land laws. It does that for us, make sure that we're required. This system will improve safety features for our officers and fire personnel. Personal safety will increase with the addition of radio, G P S and on-screen alarm. They'll be able to see where the officer is simply with the radar. Also for fire, they're into in the location, something goes wrong, they go wrong. Uh, new rule, which is again a Tyler product, will integrate directly with our accounting warrant system, our ticket buyer system, N code for court, Motorola systems, etc. It will also integrate with other existing systems, reference to our emergency nine one one, our next gen nine one one, lock scanner, emergency reporting, N C I C and NiB, which is our reporting, um, report part to the feds. And we'll give personal to both, and we'll give personnel tools they need to achieve the crucial task of keeping public safety personnel and the system and business safe, providing better customer service. Why? That's the question. Well, it's because the implementation of this software and the training that goes with it is an eighteen month process. The total prize for this is five hundred thousand ninety-eight, five hundred thousand ninety-eight eight seventy and would be financed over the span of four years at no interest. The purchase payment would be due fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Pricing is only good for this until the end of this year, till the end of this one. But it's pretty quite good. I had a team here, although.
So if you, if you like your orders and prices carefully.
It is this time. And we did renegotiate it to be a substantial prospecting.
Questions for the chief.
This system, our, our current system, can back everything.
Yeah.
So if we keep all of the.
That's, that's part of the deal. We have two systems actually in place now. The old, old system, this, this last one that we had, they've been committed and integrated all they need to do is just file transfer or dump. Uh, so glad to be behind me.
Any further questions for the chief? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Discussion room, yes. Motion.
Mayor, I approve the purchase of Tyler New World Computer and Dispatch.
Same.
There is a motion I come from, there's a motion I come from, Pauline, second. You're forward, all those effectively say aye. Those same sign. Motion carries. I'm sixteen, receive a report home discussion and take action on our request to make features of a front given facade of the building located at one eighteen West Chestnut Street, case number eight one one, that's zero seven, the line of paint is down.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Hopefully things will be the last, and she just approved a different way to go about it. And, um, the one at one eighteen West Chestnut Street currently looks like this. And, um, they will be painting in the very center of the building, in the front, the, uh, the block area, they were proposing to paint that. And then the back above the doors would be painted. And the look would be similar to what you see on the screen. So they also made some. They, that Historic Preservation Commission had approved some other modifications to the building, like the, um, awning and the sign, the address, but the awning and some additional some platters. And then on the back, that's what it would look like, um, with the metal door. And so we have the applicant with us. Uh, they have prioritized their choices. Mesquite gray is their first choice and then noir, which is a black, and then red and yellow would be the, the alternates. Let's see.
And the picture you showed is the color of their choice?
This is what it's, yes, yes, it was, it was color. It's, it was color. Speak to it.
State United address of the record.
Sure. Austin, New York, thirteen thirteen North Oracle Street, Sherman, Texas. As Donald said, you already proved it. They left this building, but recently bought and we're occupied inside of it. And the color choices, we're sticking to the, we have the bright orange block that's currently off, not painted. Um, so we need a complementary color. I think grayscale is our primary choice. Um, I've never used mesquite gray or mar. I think, but, um, I think the grayscale colors will complement gray choice currently, much better than any color. So that's why I prioritized it. I haven't seen any of these colors. So let's say gray anymore somewhere in there. And, uh, we'll test those before.
Can we go back to the picture of the building? There. So those blocks look very different.
Very friendly.
Nice, very interesting.
Yes. So that, yeah, we're removing the blockage above the windows as well as the blocks above the door. Right. Replacing the store run and, uh, really trying to create a consistent theme across the whole building, run back. And the dark, dark, uh, monochromatic colors they refer back to the industrial style of this building, was built in nineteen sixty's, fifty's era.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Discussion room, yes. Motion. There is a motion by Mayor from the committee and the second by Councilman Pauline. All those in favor, please say aye. Those same sign. Motion carries. Out of six E, receive a report home discussion and take action or request to claim the facade of the building located at three twenty-three West Main Street, case number eight one one, that's zero seven. Is that.
This would be one of the buildings that was affected by the fire in October of twenty nineteen and it's gone through several stages to get to this point. And we do have our applicant with us tonight who would speak to it. This is the current status of the building and this is the rear facade of the building. As you can tell, the front has been painted and the bottom portion would need to be reconstructed. And on the back, the, um, the lower facade has been painted, but the upper still. And then on the side. This, this wasn't in the application specifically that they have decided to paint this, but we, uh, Historic Preservation Board had considered it and voted that it should be approved to be painted. So that's what's being presented to you tonight. They could decide later that, that they want. We're hoping to see a building there soon. But the, the bottom portion of the building is concrete, I think, and, and I'll let the applicant, um, tell the appropriate material that's there. The upper portion has not been painted, we can tell, but it has, has smoke damage on it. And this is what it will look like. Please, um, I would like to commend them for agreeing to construct, um, instead of a metal lower facade, they agreed to use wood, which I think will look really nice since the, you know, the area that it is. And then this is the rear of the facade. If you'll notice on the left window, that has been made into a door so that you can comment, accommodate an entrance to upstairs for the loft. These are the colors that would be proposed and, um, I'll go ahead and let the applicant speak to that.
If you may, the rest of the record, please.
Spencer Morrison, two thousand five, Diamond Ridge, Carrollton, Texas.
Spencer, it's nice to finally meet you. You talk a lot on the phone.
Yes. Um, so obviously, I didn't notice when I, uh, you know, we, we, uh, and the design process and, and, you know, this property is actually already approved from the store board. We asked for some additional changes to the front of your facade, uh, but it's hasn't been here tonight. We're discussing the paint color. And, um, at our technical table, this one, we discussed it back and forth and, and they, you know, these were the most appropriate colors. It's indeed would be, uh, the wrongies root needle and that's that.
Questions for the council?
It's great. I just wish I could try to, uh, all the, uh, they, while we're in, so. Appreciate your patience, Paul.
Well, it couldn't be a more exciting day if we actually were meeting the process of building that. It's been long two years from the dead state. Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion room, yes.
No, I don't know. That's what we did. You might go sell the back. I think it would be so hard with it. Marketing that. If you look at that side, it's gonna be straight. But then that break was not continued, you exposed that, that was an engine break. Fire exposed it, so. While we don't normally, that's when they know this is not the one. They, but the basis, I think it's the right. For this is.
Any discussion, a motion?
Mayor, I approve the use of salted, this is your, that's what we, the script writing was here. So, as you see, the.
Sorry.
There is a motion by Mayor from the committee and the second by Councilman Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those same sign, the motion carries. Thank you so much. I'm Miss Devon Hay, project and space receiver report in all of this discussion regarding the city of this successful centennial celebration. Mr. Warner.
All right, Mayor Council, Mr. City Manager, excited to be up here again, uh, this time with, uh, something that's a little bit more fun, something we've been working on for many months in the background. And you have been a part of this process. Um, but, uh, this being the last council meeting of December, um, this is our official opportunity to, uh, launch into our successful centennial year and really showcase the amount of work that's taken, paid that's taken place in the background for, for about a few months. So, uh, before I hand the microphone off, I wanted to take a second to do a few logistical things for the council. Um, as you recall, uh, back in August, you approved a contract with a consultant for us to work with, um, to, to work on the planning and, uh, and creative side of successful centennial items that we needed, uh, so that this wouldn't be an additional burden on, on our current staff, which has been a huge, uh, help for us and, and so I wanna say thank you for that. Um, also in the budget that was approved, uh, for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, there was a line item included that, uh, for, um, the successful centennial year. So tonight, I'm gonna do a brief overview of where we stand, uh, with those funds, um, and then we'll get into the, to the fun part of the party. Um, with that being said, uh, this is a snapshot of fund seventeen. Uh, fund seventeen is, uh, Tazwall money that has been allocated, um, to go towards this and that fits in, in that criteria of what we want those funds to be used for. So we have a hundred and nine thousand two hundred dollars, uh, total included, uh, for the successful centennial through this fund. Uh, this is a breakdown of, uh, our contract with our consultant. If we were to, uh, move through the, the full phase of, of the contract, again, this was, um, uh, under the approved, uh, amount that we looked at back in August. After, uh, the consultant fees, um, in this fund alone, there would be approximately twenty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars left over if we went through, uh, January of twenty twenty-three, which is how they broke out their contract as options. I wanna make a note in here that February, starting in February of twenty twenty-two, you'll see their monthly retainer reduces and then essentially, um, the way they set up their contract is that they would work on a month-to-month basis, uh, with staff, um, and on it. Basically as needed, once we, once we get to that point, we can look at our workload and decide how it would perform. They've been great partners in that conversation. Uh, I do wanna show you a few of the expenses that we've already laid out today, um, and, and kind of where we're at. And I'll explain this bottom number, um, so that makes a little more sense. But, uh, some of the items that we know we're gonna do, uh, right now, um, are creating, uh, fifteen hundred, uh, challenge points that we'll pass out at ground operated things and, and big events and special meetings. And these will be keepsakes that, that people can put on their shelf and keep forever. Uh, low pedal pins, uh, that we can hand out at, at things like council meetings. Uh, we are doing, uh, a, a firework show to kick off the event and you'll, you'll see more about that in a little bit. Uh, but we know that that, that number is there. And that will not be taking place, uh, that will be taking place New Year's Eve, not in January. And that was one minor change, um, but, uh, we will look at that information to you here shortly. Uh, we're gonna redo our main street banners. There'll be some apparel. In September, there's gonna be a very large event and we've pinpointed, uh, some money there, general marketing materials. So you're seeing a negative number at the end after that, assuming we move forward with the entire contract on the front, uh, screen. And I just wanna say that, um, we have plans to seek sponsorships and grants, um, that will offset those costs. Uh, so the ten thousand dollars we had allocated for our September event could very easily become a much smaller number that we need out of that fund. And, and we anticipate raising, uh, a pretty significant amount of money in sponsorships. We just have to pursue those as this is the first time we are presenting our final, uh, uh, marketing and website and everything. And then we will go back out in the community and showcase what all we have planned. And so that is the logistics side of this. I'm excited to hand, uh, the microphone off to our consultants, uh, Sign and Strategies. You're gonna hear from Vicky Soderberg and Sarah O'Brien, that's the, uh, the other side of Sign. And I don't know that she is speaking tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. I, as you said, I'm Vicky Soderberg and I'm the owner of Sign and Strategies and along with Sarah, if you know. And other members of our team, we've been really honored to be a part of the planning over the past twelve months. It's been an exciting project to be a part of and you're very lucky to have the team that you have who will be working on this. They're gonna do a great job. So. Uh, let's see. So this is where. Okay, so this is our, uh, successful centennial logo. And, uh, as you can see, it's got a train, it's got a depot, and it's got Captain Dennison. And it's, um, really, uh, was a collaborative effort. If you've never developed a lot of the. It can be a little challenging, but everybody's really happy with this one. And as you'll see down at the bottom is that hashtag for Dennison one fifty that we're asking everybody to use as we hope throughout the year, along with the website, which is Dennison one fifty dot com. Talk about that in a minute. So what is successful centennial? You've seen the proclamation, you've heard a little bit about it. But it's a big word and it can be hard. Hang on. Senior, you know, yes. He's saying a word. How do you say that? The Asian media, the Don't Do It, the, that's probably a show bar. He's saying, he's saying, show. It's a funny. I'm going to play the video on the sound. Happy birthday, Dennis. Successful centennial, you know, next year, 2022, we're going to be 150 years old. We are planning a very exciting year. So, Spencer, you watch from all the things that we're planning for our successful centennial. You good? Yeah. So that video, Rebecca, for different acts, and to everyone who participated, is at the top of the homepage for the website. So if you're in the video, you're making videos. So now we can say it, but what is it? And it's a celebration. And the reason we're doing it is because Dennison has the five-year path with the future that is only limited by your imagination. Since 1872, the sense of community has been at the core of what Dennison is about. And it's that sense of community that this whole effort has been building about so that everyone can be a part of it and that there's a host of different ways that they can be involved. It's a milestone for the community and we've designed a lot of ways for people to connect as a community, as individuals, as neighborhoods, so that everybody has an opportunity to be part of. Now, one of the ways that we're getting the word out is through the website and I'm going to show you the website, but I can do that today, but you're welcome to know to it. It's Dennison150.com and it's going to continue to evolve. Right now, it's got the list of events, it's got information on how to submit an event, it's got a timeline of Dennison history that the mayor of the town was very gracious in helping us to develop the content for. And I hope you'll look at it and continue to go back to it as time goes by because it's going to continue to grow and expand. Also, at the core of this whole project are the goals and strategies that we developed and this is just kind of a brief, concise thing, but it's the goals that were created by the committee were lasting legacy, that they wanted there to be a legacy from this event, from the celebration. They wanted to be able to tell Dennison's story, not just the history of the town as we know it, but the history of the people and the stories of the people that live here, people who lived here and moved away, their ancestors, but really to have an opportunity to gather stories as well as continuing to foster and enhance the sense of community. And so once you have the goals, you gotta figure out how you're going to do it. And so we're figuring out ways for people to experience the past and we're working really hard on cultivating the engagement and participation of everybody, along with helping them to build connections and meet new people, people that they lived in town in Hawaii, but they've never actually had an opportunity to interact with. We all know that, and there's a lot of background materials that have been developed. Of course, when you have a brand, you always have to have brand guidelines to protect that brand and we do have that for strategic purpose. We also have, as you can see in this picture, things like the celebrate Dennison 150, the hashtag, and a lot of other things that will be available to people to just download and use in their posts, in their marketing, for their businesses, organizations and that kind of thing. We'll also have orderly templates for social media, cover photos, Facebook frames, Instagram stickers, a variety of ways to get people involved and to get them communicating. There are a set of talking points and this document on the left is about getting a speaker. The mayor has graciously volunteered to speak for organizations and people who are interested in having someone come, whether it's a little five-minute thing or a longer presentation about the successful centennial and talk to them about how they can get involved. This, the logo is being used for email signatures and a lot of different ways in the city communications. And we also have monthly themes that we're using. The monthly theme for January, let's get this party started. I mean, it's on the website that we've got a lot of suggestions, that things that people can do on their ongoing groups that will help them be a part of getting things started. And every month has a theme, only January, February and March on the website right now. The rest of them will be coming soon. It's to engage people and to keep them coming back to the website to get more information. We also are going to, we've got a list of 150 ways to celebrate and we're going to release those over time through social media. And there's some pretty interesting ones. So, but there's nothing for everyone. I really say that, but in this case, I think, I think we've done a really good job. I think the team has come up with a lot of ideas, but really we all need to yank everyone. So you, the council, city staff are all really important brand ambassadors to this event. And tonight's proclamation, things like email signatures, the talking points, they're all part of that effort. And we will be hosting a city training in January, which we're going to talk about tomorrow at the meeting. And we will be doing that to kind of help all the city staff really know what's going on and be able to, when somebody says, what is this, they'll be able to answer and also know how to use the branding materials and all the back. The goal is for every Dennison resident to become a brand investor. So no matter where they go and what they're doing, they're talking about the successful centennial, whether they're in Dennison or somewhere else, we'd love for other people to come and set communities and kind of help you as part of this celebration. It really does design to be a celebration for everyone in Dennison.
Questions?
Thank you. It is, it is one of the, I feel.
O'Brien, second fee receiver report of the discussion regarding this for your 2022 half quarter in progress.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I am excited to bring to you our proposed 22 C I B plan for the successful year. I think I will do a five-year plan and then change it strategically. So this is our, it is up to me. In the next few months. So this is a pretty small, pretty small training, but this is our proposed 22 plan. And so in the green, those are projects that are currently scheduled to receive funding in '22 and the blue are projects that are currently funded and underway. And so there are some mixtures there between the colors. So some of the green are already underway as well. However, they need additional funding, either in shuttle project or in under design, they need construction funding. So that's kind of the breakdown between the green and the blue. And there are 14 projects proposed to receive funding in '22 and there are projects that are already funded and are under, either under construction or under design. So as part of the five-year plan, I'll highlight some of the larger projects for the reason, additional information on those. The first one is the Texoma pump station, our existing station that pumps water from Lake Texoma to Lake Rinnell to be treated is in poor condition and is getting ready to fail. And so we have been under design with plumbers for, since 2014 and there's been plenty of steps that we've had to walk through with the core engineers and getting easements and a few steps that have to be taken. So that has finally been approved by the core and received our permit in November of this year, so we are excited that we can finally begin construction on that. So our next step is to move forward with a CMAR project, which is, let's record, for like a four-odd, five-odd, five-odd, eight-odd. So once we get us a CMAR on the board, we'll be able to begin construction hopefully in late summer of 2022. We can anticipate construction to take approximately a year. It'll depend on the weather, of course, but that will, it will take approximately one year to build. The second one is Quarterwell Road and it is a waterline along FN 17 design. That is a, is one project constructed in two phases. First phase was completed in early 2021 and the replacement for phase two will run from the category of 22 FN 996 and will replace a 10-inch waterline with a full bench that is PVC pipe. And that was ordered to be fitted to construction for approximately 1.5 million at the November 1 council meeting. Now we have the new water tower that will be at Ed Grayson College. This water tower is at 90% design with VHC and they, we have already had multiple discussions with the college at a Pinta location. We're working through logo details right now on where the placement of those will be, college and with the city's logo. This one will replace the tower, our tower at the NTRA and will be the existing college water tower that's out here. The 691 water one will feed the tower that's at the, at one of the college and that will be from the intersection of 1417 and 691 over to Preston Road. Will also set us up to be able to continue with water at Preston Road or additional road. That one was also ordered to be fitted to construction for approximately 1.5 million at the November 1 council meeting. So as part of some of the requirements that we have, we have mandates passed on to us from the state and generators at the water plant on those mandates. Synnoh 3 was passed earlier this year and that requires some sort of redundant power that based on the fallout from the winter storm. So we are working with plumber to upgrade our electrical at the plant. Our electrical, the last time it was updated was in 1993. And so to be able to be compatible with these newer generators, we need to upgrade all of the electrical. So we will be moving forward with that in 2022 for purchase in New York there. In addition to the water plant, Parkdale Water Tower will also have a generator on site, so that one will help keep the water in the elevated storage tank, which will keep water up in the tanks and we can push it out to the city of Quasborough, the west side of town and several other wholesale customers as well. The second, the second item out of the water plant is a capacity increase for treatment. So the last time our treatment plant was, had a capacity increase, really 1980, so fourteen years ago. So we haven't had a lot of growth in almost 41 years, but it's hit hard and so we are needing to upgrade our capacity at that location based on calculations that TCQ has for treatment plants and our wholesale customer implications. We are at a point where we are required to increase that capacity based on percentage. So our plant, we do have options to be able to move that to our water plant master plugs and we should be meeting with our engineers here in the next couple of weeks to know how rich options we should move forward with, but we have several. So that's all of the water projects or most of the water projects for 2022, so we'll move over to the sewer projects. And so the debt create interceptor, I mean, for death, we've heard me a couple of times, that's our major sewer line that runs to the west side of town. And it is currently ranging from a 15 to a 24-inch sewer line and it's about 31,000 linear feet. So we plan to upsize that to either a 30 or a 30 or a 36 inch and that will help sort of all of the additional development in that area again. That one is under design now, but we hope to be, to have construction started by the end of '22 as well. The water plant, the sewer line was identified in our master plan as a needed upgrade. Now we have inflow, infiltration of that line, but it will also help serving growth along 75. We originally had it scheduled in '24 and '25 with petty interest in the 75 corridor and it was moved up into the schedule, so we would start design on phase one. That would eliminate any manhole, manhole overflow or any, it will, it will help reduce the inflow infiltration in that area as well. So phase one is, is about 7,000 linear feet, which is only about $3 million dollar project. The total project is about nine million and so we'll have that funded in future years as well for the remainder of that's phase one. And then out at our sewer plant, we have done our sewer plant master plan and it is almost complete. We should have something completed here in the next month or so. But to set us up for growth, we also have to increase our treatment or our possibility of treatment capacity at our sewer plant. And so there are specific steps we have to take to make sure that we have all of the proper items in place. So right now, we are underway on the head wall project that we will prepare the head wall. So the secondary clarifier replacement will be the second one. With the project we're underway on, we will have all of our temporary piping in place and so we can use that temporary piping to go ahead and replace all of the secondary clarifiers. So that's the next needed step. Once we are able to repair the clarifiers and then move into the next step, which will actually set us up to be able to increase capacity. And then the NTRA sewer plant out by the airport, we have the looms, which is the older style sewer plant, but we don't use our looms right now because the shape they're in, they require certain vegetation. And so we have scheduled to go ahead and rehab those looms so that way we can grow out in the airport area as well. We do have, I will say, we do have 800,000 scheduled for train A and 800,000 scheduled for train B. Staff is going to try to do a lot of that work in house and we anticipate that double number to go down. But in any event, we have to hire a contractor to do most of the work. We will need, and so that is what we're potentially decreasing in the future if staff's able to do the most of the work. That was a very short agenda. So if you have any questions?
So, I can, like, you know, Quasborough can be able to, like, that at all or is that so, opportunity again? You see what our citizens are paying for infrastructure for, they know.
So the water tower does for our citizens. Yes, so we have not approached Quasborough about any assistance and funding for the generator.
Very, thank you very much for all the work you put into the C I P, I think for us. There's something about we should not know, what, where, and why, but all those projects, some of that we crawl that we're, this is a great, great. Pursuant to check of 501, Texas government, hoping council reserves to rack and then indicate that, as deemed necessary during this meeting to receive legal advice. in a section of the law, as deemed necessary during this meeting to receive legal advice of attorney, any post to the oven, by law, is just the policy. Consult with the attorney on a matter of which the attorney to do to the government body under the Texas District Court, rules of provincial conduct, one thing with this chapter and/or consult with the attorney about pending or contemplating litigation or contemplating settlement of the same section 551 of Title 71. Concur with city attorney regarding this and ISD and all persons, go to J. Smith Wood Reserving Suit Number T-21-3327, 397 District Court, Grayson County. Concur with the city attorney regarding City of Innocent versus Tico Grande LP, cause number 2021-1-001 ED, county court of law, number one, Grayson County. Concur with city attorney regarding provisions of city services. 90-day review of the city manager, discuss the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassigned of duties, discipline, or dismissal of or superior complaint against the officer or employees, section 551.074. Annual review of municipal court judge. 90-day review of the city manager, fire chief. Deliberations regarding economic development negotiations pursuant to check to section The time is 8:10, and we are down exactly six.
This conference will now be recorded.
Concur with city attorney regarding this and ISD and all, versus J. Smith Wood Reserving Suit Number T-21-3327, 397 District Court, Grayson County. No action taken. Concur with city attorney regarding City of Innocent versus Tico Grande LP, cause number 2021-1-001 ED, county court of law, number one, Grayson County. No action taken. Concur with city attorney regarding provision of city services.
Counsel, this time I'd like to make our recommendation to approve Resolution Number 4174, leading to providing city services, a resolution of the city. Counsel of the City of Innocent, Texas declaring emergency, providing for the appointment of temporary firefighters, providing for effective testing. I believe so through the resolution as presented. Second.
There is the motion by council member, Mayor of Kim Hender, and a second by council member Spiel. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say aye. Motion carries. 90-day review of city manager, no action taken. Annual review of municipal court judge.
Mayor, I'm looking for doing 2% increase in the first of the school court. Second.
There being the motion by Mayor of Kim Hender, and a second by council member Forright. All those in mind, please say aye. Opposed, say aye. Motion carries. 90-day review of city manager, no action taken. Fire chief, no action taken. Deliberations regarding economic development negotiations pursuant to check the section 551.087, no action taken. There being no for the business to come court in line. The time is 11:41. Woo, we are.